Alrighty, team. Let's begin. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:04. Richie, I hope you're getting my cue. And let's begin. I will ask all school committee members and all team members that are on this call to join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead and unmute yourself. And let's begin.
Congratulations to the five.
For the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, liberable, and justice for all. For all.
Awesome. Thank you so much, team. Go unmute yourselves, please. Alrighty, so I would like to just remind the audience that we do have a Spanish interpreter, Juan. What is his last name? My apologies. Juan Bernal will be interpreting for today. So si usted quiere escuchar esta reunión en español, tenemos a Juan Bernal hoy que va a translating la reunión para hoy. Alrighty, so the first item on the agenda is can I please have a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting in November?
Are you supposed to do a roll call first, honey?
Oh, my apologies, team. Yes. Veronica, maybe please have a roll call?
Sure. Roll call for attendance. Mr. Jimenez?
Present.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes, present.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Enriquez?
Present.
Ms. Velez? Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Santiago? Ms. Alfaro? Mr. Wilson?
Present.
That's six presents and three members absent.
Thank you, Veronica. Team, before jumping in, I apologize. I'd like to just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, even though we're a little past that. I hope everyone had a wonderful meal with their families. I know the holidays looked a little different this year, and I hope that everyone is safe at home. We are moving right along to the first item on the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting notes from November's meeting?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes and command them to the record.
And our second emotion.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Next, we have public comment. Veronica, do we have any public comments submitted?
We do not have any public comments tonight.
Thank you. Moving right along to presentations, the fun part of this meeting. Alrighty, Ms. Dr. Obeda. Oh, actually, I get the first one. Yes, awesome. Alrighty, so we will start with Roberto Jimenez. I'd like to thank you for your service. If all school committee members can unmute themselves and give Mr. Jimenez a round of applause for his service. Thank you, Roberto, for your service. This certificate is hereby awarded to our Roberto Jimenez Rivera in appreciation of his devoted and invaluable services as the 2020 Chelsea School Committee Delegate to the Chelsea City Council this third day of December 2020. Thank you, Roberto. Up next, we have our next award to Henry David Wilson. So, Henry, thank you for your service as well for being the sure educational collaborative member. So, thank you so much. If everyone can.
You.
You, Harvey.
Henry, nice job, honey.
If we were in person, we would all take a group. We will eventually get there, but thank you, Henry, for your service. We truly appreciate it. Next, we have our wonderful Vice Chair, Rosemary Carlisle. Thank you for your devoted and invaluable services, and thank you for supporting me as chair this year. Truly appreciate it. Everyone, please, let's give Rosemary a round of applause.
Thank you very much, honey. Appreciate it.
And I get to do the next one. I'd like to just thank our... Oh, and we need to put a name change on there.
Definitely.
For her service as chair this year and just doing a wonderful job at chairing and leading us and appreciation of your devoted and invaluable services as a 2020 Chelsea School Committee Chairwoman this third day of December 2020. Thank you so much for your service.
Hey! Good job, Kelly!
Trying, I'm trying. You are. It's a team effort. Truly, it's been a blessing. Thank you. Alrighty, now I will turn it over to Mr. Dr. Jennings, who will present on our equity update.
So, we're gonna shift sharing screens, and Dr. Jennings will share. As you know, we made an emphasis to put equity front and center, and as a result of that, one of the first steps was hiring Dr. Jennings, and I'm just so excited to have Dr. Aaron Jennings share the work that he's been doing since he started, and we're just real excited to have him share the progress in just two months and where we're going and where he's going. So, Dr. Jennings, do you want to share your screen?
I think you first need to unshare your screen so I can share mine.
My apologies.
Give it to me? Okay. Sorry, two seconds.
Dr. Jennings.
I know, right?
Dr. Jennings, before you begin, I'm so sorry for the interruption. I'd like to acknowledge our City Councilor, Leah Robinson, who is joining our meeting tonight. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. Thank you. I, Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman, committee members, thank you so very much for giving me this opportunity to present to you all. Dr. Obeda, I just have one correction. It hasn't been two months. It's actually less than 40 days, 38 days to be exact, since I've been on the job. So, this is exciting, but thank you. Right. So, I want to just give you all a overview of my presentation. I won't be before you long, but we will do a brief overview of my entry plan. I'll share insights about my entry, my listening and learning tour, next steps, and then I will conclude with questions and answers. Alright? Before I go into the meat of my context, I want to share with you my why. At the very genesis of my professional career, I've had a picture on my laptop to remind me of my why, to remind me that I get up every day to do this work for students, particularly for Black and Brown students. This picture right here is on my laptop that I open up every day for the past 38 days. So, I just want you to know that this is my impetus. This is my why. My entry plan. When I interviewed for this position, Christine Lee said, "Aaron, before I first interviewed, make sure you submit an entry plan." And I really appreciated that and smiled because, in my estimation, the entry plan ensures a successful entrance. And so, granted, I had multiple iterations of my plan, but nevertheless, I leaned into it, and I would like to believe, following this entry plan, my success has been felt and seen. I will say, along with the purpose of my entry plan, I really have followed by three points of my commitment of an action plan, Plan of Action for Collaborative Action, Capacity Building, and Systems Change. This is how I see myself doing this work here in Chelsea, once again through collaborative action, capacity building, and systems change. Given I am deeply committed to building relational trust with stakeholders here in the city, gaining a deep contextual knowledge of Chelsea, and most important for me, supporting and uplifting student, staff, and the district. I also want to highlight the commitment that is evident and present here. I want to give kudos to you, City Council, and to you, Dr. Obeda, because, you know, as the headline reads, I'm the first ever Equity Officer here, and I don't take that lightly. And so, I thank you for this commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion work for our school district here. So, to operationalize my entry plan, I really wanted to lean into a Listening and Learning Tour, which is simply me humbling myself and/or getting in a posture of learning from key stakeholders in the city. I really wanted to know, but I don't know. I was taught DK/DK, "Don't know, don't know." I'm a newcomer here in Chelsea. I live in Chelsea, but I'm new, and so you are the experts. And so, it behooves me to, you know, craft great questions and really lean into your expertise. Furthermore, it gives me the opportunity to operationalize my commitment of relational trust, contextual knowledge, as well as supporting and uplifting this work. So, I will say that this is a listing of my interview sectors as well as roles. I've already had, I want to say, a half a dozen interviews with students, but I'm committing the month of December to honoring and uplifting their voice more, so I will be leaning into that as well. And you'll also see that I have a meeting with the Police Chief and other individuals later in the month of December. So, this is just a, as of November the 30th, from the Chelsea Public Schools side, a small sample of the people I have had the opportunity to have interviews with. For the city as well as community organizations, it is an exhaustive list. And so, for them, I want to say thank you. And in less than 40 days, I've had 60-plus interviews. Now to the meat of it. I asked five questions. I don't think they were, you know, like questions, but I wanted to get a sense of the community here. I also wanted to lean into what equity and diversity, how it has played out in this community, the strengths, weaknesses, and even opportunities. So, as you see, questions three and four center around equity and diversity. And so, before I asked questions three and four, I actually provided a working definition of equity and diversity and what it means to enact at the system level, to ensure that we're all on the same playing field. In my tenure as a professional, I've come to realize if we have 10 different people in the room, every person has a different definition of equity and diversity. So, ensure that the insights that I was getting were on the same playing field. I provided one. And the fifth question, which is the question that, as a social worker inside of me, it was the question I was probably the most happy to offer, actually left people a surprise. They often smiled at me and said, "Hey, Aaron, I didn't suspect for you to ask this question, and matter of fact, let me get back to you on how you can learn from me and continue to support my work." But it was a question that they really appreciated. The first question. What do you love about Chelsea? The number-one response was, "I love the students. I love our students and our families." And I will say, I've interviewed a half a dozen of our students, and, you know, will interview more, and I can see that, I can see why that's the number-one question over and over and over and over again. People rarely acknowledge the sense of belonging they feel here. One person said, and let me say, the quotes are from actual people. It's from one person, but the quotes are summation of what many others have said throughout my interviews with them. So, one said, "No matter who you are, it feels like there is always a place for you here. There's always a place for you here." I want to pause and give you an opportunity to read the slide. As it relates to strength, resiliency and tiny but mighty resonated with many individuals. Our students resilient, our parents are resilient, our community is resilient, and the fact that we're 1.8 square miles or 2.2 square miles, if you add the water, we're tiny, but we're still mighty. And one person said, "We get stuff done." As for the challenges, I want to quote one student, which was also echoed by others in agreement, "I fear that I am Chelsea high smart and not ready for college." Next slide. Want to give you a second to review the slide? What is working in terms of equity and diversity in Chelsea? Two quick points. The conversations have started, and the students particularly acknowledge the small things the high school staff, teachers do for them, whether they don't eat pork or they have to bring in separate lunch. The students overwhelmingly said, "Our staff really help accommodate us." I also want to read one quote. "The awareness exists. For a long time, we blamed the students. Now we realize it's the system and not the students. The system is not meant to support everyone." This was also centered around reshifting the problem or what we see as the problem. No longer our students, but the context, the situation of factors that lie in hand. And last but certainly not least, which was something that was said over and over again, the recent hires of people of color at the school and district levels. Continuing to the last slide, just want to give you pause to read. Two quick points. Students feel a sense of belonging and a sense of belonging and inclusion, ranging from their sexuality as well as their documentation standards. And I think the document, Chelsea, you read that the Chelsea is a reproductiveist undocumented population, goes back to the earlier point of, "We welcome all. We accept all here." So, now question four. What is not working in terms of equity and diversity? I want to pause, leave opportunity to read the slide. I want to highlight just a couple of things. One, the lack of Black and Brown teachers and administrators. And many conversations I had with teachers and staff, the question, they were happy that, of the most recent hires at both the school and district levels, but they questioned, "What took so long?" And also, "Why did George Floyd have to be killed for people to acknowledge that we don't have Black and Brown educators in our building? Enough of them." Next slide. Two things I want to highlight, that overwhelmingly majority mentioned that a lack of cultural proficiency or cultural awareness, as well as not recognizing one's own impact to do the work, to do good work, as well as to cause harm. So, lack of culture awareness and a lack of one's ability to do the work, as well as to cause harm. My fifth and final question. How can I continue to learn from you and support your work? Oftentimes, I would give back, "Hey, let's continue to having these conversations. I would appreciate future connections and collaborations," even inviting me to come into the schools, come into their classrooms, to be a thought partner with them. And I will say, I think my proclivity is, just like Dr. Alme's, to be in the classroom, so, I mean, maybe in the schools. So, I'm definitely looking forward to the opportunity to have conversations, connections, and collaborations in the respective schools. Next steps. I hope to wrap up my Listening and Learning Tour by the end of December. That being said, I have a pretty ambitious goal to have 20-plus more interviews. I want to see if I can get to 100. Not as an artificial number, but just give me a really nice data sample set, sample size. From this data, I would do an analysis and highlight, make mention of trends, and with those trends, we will go into a district-wide equity audit. As with this equity audit, after, when the equity audit is complete, we will have a detailed Plan of Action recommendation. As with these recommendations, that we hope to, that we plan and intend to go to craft a plan to ensure that more equity is felt in Chelsea Public Schools at a systemic nature. Until then, I will continue to co-craft, analyze, and even work alongside colleagues to reviewing policies, curriculum, as well as practices in our district. And I will say, I'm doing that very same thing now. I was just acknowledging in the meeting the other day how I'm working across Dr. Alme's cabinet right now. I'm working with the curriculum. I'm working with the support service workers, all through the equity lens, and the team has willingly and excitingly invited me to the table to collaborate with them, and I feel the same way, to be willing, happy to be at the table. It's the end of my presentation. I'm opening up for questions and answers.
Dr. Jennings, first and foremost, thank you for all of your work and for choosing us, our small but mighty city, to do your wonderful work. I'd like to open it up to the school committee, see if anyone has any questions or comments they would like to share with Dr. Jennings.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Carlisle.
Well, thank you. I know you can't see me, but I'm here. Congratulations. Welcome to Chelsea, Aaron. You're doing a wonderful job so far. What can we do as a city and as a school committee people to try to get more people to apply for jobs in the city of Chelsea?
That's a good point. And I want to share with you that I'm working across Dr. Alme's cabinet. Actually, I have, I'm working with Dr. Alme, I'm sorry, I'm with Christine Lee, Christine Lee, right now, on building not only a recruitment, but a retention plan on how we can recruit and retain people of color in the district. I will say, I probably will be able to give you more specifics in the days ahead. I don't want to, like, speak ahead of myself. Oh, we definitely would need your support. We definitely would need your help and your aid. I know that when I had an interview with our chairwoman, she was saying, "Hey, Aaron, this is also a passion of mine, and so whatever we can do, whatever I can do to help this, no, you got me on board." And so, I committed myself to getting back with her once I have the substance or the insight to make the ask. But right now, I'm still in the information gathering phase, so I don't want to say, "Hey, if you all can do this for me," and me not having a deep analysis of the need itself to adequately connect the solution to or the individual forward.
Okay. Oh, is there anything else the rest of the members can do? I know Christine and Superintendent do a wonderful job looking to get qualified people to teach in Chelsea, but congratulations and keep up the good work, honey.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Ms. Velez?
Ms. Garcia, I just wanted to make a comment and thank Dr. Obeda and the team and for bringing Dr. Jennings on. And yes, unfortunately, why did it have to take so long to have somebody in place to do the work? But it's better late than never, right? So, we are moving ahead, and I just want to say that I'm very impressed with Dr. Jennings, that he's had so many interviews, and I had the opportunity to have the one-on-one, so I'm very excited about having him on board. I'm looking forward to, you know, what will come out of this. I know great things will come out. We're not perfect. It's a work in process, but we're here to support you and whatever it is you need from us, not just as school committee members, but also just being community members, because it's much more than just the schools, it's the whole city. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you. Thank you for being here and for choosing us, like Ms. Garcia said.
Thank you. I want to follow-up and say that before I took this job, I actually had two other jobs offered, I mean, not given, but two other jobs offered for me, and both were back home with family. But there were two factors that really pushed it over for me here. One, working alongside Dr. Obeda, and two, the commitment, well, three things, the commitment from the school committee to support Dr. Obeda and the DEI role, and three, the work of Councilman Robertson and his colleagues at the City Council. I said to myself, "Wow, they are enacting a DEI office," and me understanding that my role, I sit, you know, school department's in City Hall, and know I have the opportunity to have a jobalike partner across, you know, up the, you know, around the corner, up the steps from me, and collaboratively work together. Our students live in the city, and so it is a likely, you know, there is no way, you know, we cannot not work together. We have to on behalf of our students. So, that was a factor that I was like, you know, this right here is where I'm supposed to be because of the connections and collaborations. I'm often having, you know, during my 60 interviews, I had to tell myself, "Aaron, slow down, Aaron. You're still in the learning phase, still in the learning phase." But, you know, Dr., I just was excited to be here and see the potential to do the work.
Thank you, Ms. Velez, and thank you, Dr. Jennings. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak?
Yeah. Dr. Jennings, you said that you had some type of conversation with the city councilors, a couple of city councils. Have you spoke to anyone else at City Hall about the diversity position that you have? And also, okay, that's it first.
Yes. My slide eight. So, these are the individuals, this is an exhaustive list since the 30th of November of my City Hall interviews, as well as the community.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Do you have a follow-up, sir?
I thought about it, but I changed my mind, so it's all good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Are there any other members that would like to comment or have any questions regarding this presentation today?
This is Marisol.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Jennings. Welcome again, and just want to reiterate what you said, which I find a lot of joy that Dr. Obeda had the leadership to really bring this position to the city, and thank you for choosing us, and thank you. And thank you for your commitment to this type of work because it's super important. And yeah, I really appreciate you sharing that list. And thank you for your commitment and also just to even say like, hey, you know, I'm just getting started here. And for taking the time to really work at a pace that feels right. As you said, just gathering information and making your assessments is so critically important. So, I appreciate that. And yeah, like everybody else said, you know, we're here to be supportive to you and anything that might be helpful as longtime residents of the city. I always say, there's just a ton of different knowledge and historical knowledge from different perspectives and experiences. And so, however, we could be a resource and supportive to you and the team, please let us know. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
I want to say honestly, thank you for being so welcoming and accepting of me. When I was asking the questions, there were times where I had to restrict myself because I felt the same sentiments of me living in Chelsea for less than 40 days. But everyone, you know, reaching out their virtual arms and hugs to me. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Any other questions or comments? All righty. Well, I will end that with sending you a virtual hug, Dr. Jennings. Thank you for joining the team. And we look forward to working with you. And I can't wait to see all of the wonderful work that you will do for our city and our students. Our students, I know, are super eager to meet you and to work with you as well. They are ready. They are ready for this. All righty, team, moving right along. Thank you, Dr. Beta, for posting the agenda. I will now turn it to Ms. Kent, Mrs. Kent, who will share the indicators of success with us.
Okay, are those being projected fine? Can you see those? Okay. All right, tonight's presentation is going to be very quick. We do not have much new data to share as I was here just a couple of weeks ago and we've had Thanksgiving in between. I will have much more data for you at the January meeting. So, tonight, we're going to start on page six, which is the dropout rate. Attendance is being fixed and we're piloting it all, and I promise I'll have it next time. And grades are closing, have closed in some places in the district and closed tomorrow at the high school. So, I will have those as well in January. So, indicator eight is about our dropout rate. And you can see, I don't know if my cursor shows, but you can see here that the, we have had 18 students drop out, which is 11 more than last month. However, you can see compared to last year, we're doing quite well. And we have 14 less students that have dropped out. Down here in this chart, you can see, as per usual, unfortunately, most of those are Ls. If we look at the notes about who those students are, you will see that, as we said, 11 location unknown, which means that they came off of our rolls, but we weren't able to talk to them or know what was happening. And as I said, seven were ELL, English learners. And most of them, more than half, were in grade 11. Moving to page nine, which is our mobility. Sorry if I'm making you a little seasick here. You can see that in the last month, now November is a very short school month due to the holidays, we had 82 students either come or go. Overall, we had 12 more leave than come. And overall, we have had 624 students either come or go this school year. And just comparing that to last year, just to give you some frame of reference, that's about 50 less students than last year. So, this percentage here of 10.23, last year was at 10.8. So, we're in the same ballpark that we were last year. But you do also have to remember that we finished, you know, started the school year 10 days later this year due to the 10 days of professional development that the commissioner gave us. And that's it for today. Again, next month will be packed, but for now, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Kent. I'd like to now open it up to the school committee. Are there any questions or comments for Mrs. Kent?
This is Kent, this is Henry. All right, do you have a reason or anything about the dropout rate? Why they're leaving now even though they're not really in school?
So, a lot of, some of that is tracking down kids that have been absent for a long period of time. You know, tracking down and trying to clean up attendance and making sure that they are actually attending school. So, there, some of it is students withdrawing, right? I mean, obviously, they're withdrawing, but it's also taking them off our rolls if we have not been able to contact them. As you can see from the notes, a lot of them were locations unknown, which means that we didn't ever really even got to have a conversation with them about what was happening.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Are there any other questions? And I am scanning all the photos, so if I miss you, I apologize. Feel free to just unmute yourself if you have any questions. All righty, Mrs. Kent, I did have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Two questions. Following the dropout numbers, out of curiosity, and I think you alluded to this earlier for Henry's question, but how exactly do you define dropout? Is it a certain number of absences? Is it 14, if I remember correctly, or?
Usually, students need to have missed three consecutive weeks of school. So, 15 days, not necessarily weeks, but 15 consecutive days, at which point, we do all we can with our attendance officers and everything to try to, you know, to try to contact them, including home visits, you know, everything. And that is when we would disenroll.
Got it. And I wonder, are there any guidelines, you know, just out of curiosity? Has that changed now during the pandemic? It's still, it's the same. Okay. And then, my second question is, now, I know that the memorandum was lifted in October, if I'm not mistaken, and we had a lot of families, unfortunately, go homeless. And so, I'm wondering if we have any, any data on our homeless students? Do we have, yeah, did any of our kiddos lose their homes during this time?
So, I don't have data on me for that right now. If that, I could look into that for our next meeting, if you would like, and bring that with me next time. But I don't have that one ready to go.
Okay. Thanks so much. I appreciate that. All righty, Dr. Beta, I'll turn it over to you for our and next, our next agenda item.
In our personnel, we have our personnel update in quarter B. And then, our enrollment reports. Veronica has sent those to you, but I'm trying to pull those up. Okay. Just have the agenda here. Let me get the enclosures real quick. Here they are. Okay. A lot of minutes in our last meeting. Okay, so this is our, these are our personnel changes. And so, I would like to.
Oh, we're seeing the agenda.
You are? Oh, interesting. Let me do this again. You know, this did it last time to me. How about now?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So, here are our personnel changes from, for this month. Resignations, retirements, and then you have our demographic data. New hires and promotion and transfers. And then, we have our enrollment report. And so, we're at a steady 6,054 students. So, I would like to commend these two reports to the record.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Are there any questions on these two enclosures or comments? All righty.
I do have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Jimenez.
On the enrollment report. So, the number that I saw there for the pre-K was like 177. I'm curious what those numbers look like compared to last year. And we may have talked about this in a previous meeting. I'm just, I'm just kind of just curious what the drop-off has been.
Sorry if my screen is, it's kind of, I'm having issues with the, I'm going to go back to the agenda, Mr. Jimenez. To your question with pre-K, our pre-K numbers are actually down from last year. And so, is kindergarten. Part of that is obviously, we're in remote learning. And so, a lot of families opted to keep their students at home. And so, we across, we did some research across the state and have learned that kindergarten enrollment and pre-K enrollment across the state is, has decreased as a result of remote learning in particular. Because families would either opted out of pre-K and decided to send their students to private daycare or take care of them at home due to COVID. So, our enrollments are definitely, were impacted by that.
I just, just a comment, just for any folks like watching at home. I think it's important for folks to know that next year's funding numbers are based on this year's enrollment information. And so, you know, I think, I think we need to be, as school committee members, advocating at the state level to make sure that the state does something about this because a lot of those students might end up coming back to our district. And we need to make sure that the funding that we get next year is reflective of the student body that we have. Because otherwise, we could be trying to educate way more students with, you know, the funding for fewer. So, I think it's important to keep that in mind, that COVID is impacting our school district in so many different ways. And we need to make sure that our legislators do, you know, their due diligence to make sure that the impact of the pandemic is minimized for our district.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jimenez. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. All righty, team. Next up, we have unfinished business. We don't have any, so we are moving right along to new business. Consideration and action to accept.
Chairwoman Garcia, chairwoman, sorry. We missed committee reports. And we also have the student rep. I don't know if he wants to say anything.
Oh, thank you for the flag. All righty, rewind a little bit. All righty, Dr. Beta, do we have, I'm sorry, do you mind showing the committee reports for curriculum instruction and UN resources?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we have set the subcommittee meetings and commend them to the record.
Second.
Great, thank you.
To our school rep, if they have something.
Yes. Is our student rep here?
Yes, indeed.
All right.
So, just update about the school, right? So, there has been a few things that's been happening this past few couple of weeks. The first one, and the most important, of course, you know, the rounds of interviews with Dr. Jennings. So, kind of shook with the last question, still thinking about it. And then, for, so, as soon as created Spirit Week for our whole school, you know, amidst this pandemic, our, what's it called, pep rally should have been like a few weeks ago. And with the idea, we thought about having Spirit Week and spread it to like all class levels. And also, just kind of like show off our outfits and kind of like encourage students to turn the cameras on during classes. So, that way, they can show off, you know, what they're wearing. And then, we can have more face-to-face communications with teachers and students. And as well as have seniors, because, you know, as a classroom associate, senior class, we want them to send us pictures so that we can show them off on social media and kind of have like that connection in the community, even though we're virtual. Also, the new, the clubs have been starting up this year, like a few weeks ago. And, you know, with the, you know, the clubs that I'm part of, we're getting a lot more, you know, emails, a lot more requests from students. And, you know, just more, like more involvement of students in those programs, kind of like in a way to distract them. Yeah.
Awesome. I'm so sorry I skipped you, and it is so nice to meet you, Mr. Richard Flores. Thank you for joining us today. Are there any questions for our wonderful student rep?
First to you.
Yes.
So, Richard, thank you so much for updating us. And I'm glad to hear that you guys are trying to engage more students by having clubs and the Spirit Week. I know it's hard, but I appreciate the work you are, you guys are putting into it. But can you, because we're on Facebook, we're on cable, and I've had the opportunity to speak to some of the seniors. And they're feeling kind of down because of the situation, which is normal. But you, as their peer, what can you say, some, do you have a message to support them and make them get through this process? Because you guys are in it together and we're here to support you guys. So, what is one thing you would tell them about what's going on and not to give up?
My one, you know, like, voice would say is just kind of like, you know, even though it's a struggling time, you know, we're all going through the same thing. And it's all, you know, it's a hard time to go through. But, you know, having each other, even if it's virtually, you know, it's all lost connection person to person in school. So, at least, you know, interacting with each other, at least if it's in class, just, you know, typing something. It's meaningful because you don't really get those messages. So, you know, when I sit in their period and I get those messages from my other classmates, you know, just, you know, what's wrong with this one? We're not really like leaning over, just like, whoa, what's going on? So, even though it's a hard time, you know, we encourage you to please, you know, socialize, chat with people because kind of means a lot. And if you're feeling lost, please reach out. We're always available, you know, even if it's connections, you know, questions, anything that we can answer as, you know, students, or we can guide you to our counselors. Please reach out. And yeah, please continue to engage in your classes.
Thank you, Richard. It's very important for them to know that their peers are there for them. Because sometimes, you know, as a mother, I know if I told my kid something, sometimes they don't want to hear it. But when they hear from their peers, they're most likely to, you know, to listen to it and try to do it. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Richard, I'd just like to echo what Ms. Velez shared just now. As an educator myself, it brings me so much joy to hear students, you know, trying to really engage their classmates and trying their best to stay positive during these difficult times. So, I applaud you very much. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Of course. All righty, team, I think we're okay to move on. Thank you, Veronica, for flagging that for me. All righty, team, next up on our agenda is unfinished business. See that we don't have any. We can move right along to new business. Consideration and action to accept a gift of eight gift cards from the Zonta Club of Chelsea at a total value of $200. Found in enclosure F. Explanation, as in years past, the Zonta Club has generously donated eight gift cards to Chelsea students in need with a total combined value of $200. School social workers will help identify families who will receive a gift card. I'm sorry, will receive the gift cards. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Veronica, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, consideration and action to accept a gift of eight gift cards from the Zonta Club of Chelsea at a total of value of $200. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez? Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent. The motion carries.
Motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept a food security infrastructure grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of $80,743. Explanation: As part of the state's COVID-nineteen response, the food insecurity, I'm sorry, the food security infrastructure grant program was created to ensure that individuals and families throughout the Commonwealth have equitable access to food, especially local food. The funding will be used to purchase new equipment and point-of-sale tablet technology, which will assist in food distribution when students move to hybrid learning. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-one, Section Thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Veronica, may we please have a roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a food security infrastructure grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of $80,743. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative and one absent. Motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, the motion carries. Alright, that is all we have for new business. Next up, communication. We don't have any. So moving on to announcements. Are there any announcements we would like to share tonight?
Ms. Garcia, I have a small one.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to share to the community, I know that the school committee, um, is aware of these. But for anyone at home, parents, um, students, uh, anybody interested, uh, this year, there's been a charter review commission that was set up, uh, to review and make changes or any recommendations to our charter, our city charter. And our city charter is, um, more or less what we would sort of call like our, our city constitution, if you will. Um, it's a very important document and the only way those changes get made are through this, uh, once every ten years, through a separate process, but this is one of them. Um, the next meeting that they're having is December sixteenth. Um, and for folks that are interested in, um, obtaining any information regarding that meeting or, um, have questions about it, they can contact, um, the chairwoman of that committee, which is our counselor, um, Judith Garcia, and her contact is available on the City of Chelsea's website, um, including the city council clerk, Fatima, who's also available. But, um, it's really important, they're winding down their process. I know that we have, um, two of our own members present, uh, two of our own school committee members present, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Carlisle, who are both members of that body, but wanted to flag that it is, um, you know, winding down towards the end and votes are taking place. So it's important to just follow the work that's happening there. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Are there any other announcements?
Well, I don't think we'll be, um, having a next school committee meeting. Um, so I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and all the other people that enjoy this holiday with us, I want to wish you all a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Others? Ready. Well, I have an announcement. Um, counselor Melinda Vega and I are sponsoring this year's holiday drive at the, uh, the collaborative, which is now La Corovarativa. Uh, we are accepting donations every day. We would love for you to contribute toys. Our hope is to sprinkle a little bit of joy, um, in everyone's home during such a difficult year. And so if you are interested in volunteering, gift wrapping, or distributing gifts, please email me, call me. I'm more than happy to, uh, work with you. So again, we are, and I will share the flyer on our Chelsea Public School page. Uh, but essentially, we are accepting gifts all year. I'm sorry, not all year, all month. And, uh, every Friday, we are gift wrapping. And then the big day of distributing toys and food, gloves, mittens, hats, uh, will be December twenty-third. So thank you.
And where do we drop them off at, honey?
Uh, thank you. Good, good catch. We, uh, please drop off any toys, like the donny, at the food pantry, uh, located on Twenty-Fifth Sixth Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, any other announcements?
Um, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
I, I would just like to thank the team from the, um, school department who worked in conjunction to provide over thirty boxes of turkeys and whatnot to, uh, school-aged families. And I just want to thank them. Everybody knows who they are. We will not name them. And, and actually, I'd like to offer congratulations to you. Uh, the young girl who I used to see keeping score over at North Cambridge Catholic during the basketball games. And good luck on your new endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Alrighty, team, do I have a, oh, wait a minute, before I go, I'd also like to echo Ms. Carlisle. I wish you all a happy holidays. And I, um, I just pray that everyone is safe and sound during these difficult times. Alrighty, everyone.
Good night. Up, big motion.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn this meeting.
My second.
My third.
Alrighty, team, have a wonderful night and thank you for joining us today.
You're very welcome.